Good evening. I'd like to bring the March 26, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, I'm actually going, well, I do not have any announcements this evening. And is there anyone here for anything not currently posted on our agenda? Seeing as none, I'm actually flipping the way this is going. We're doing item number two, which is the proposed proclamation and possible votes. In the last meeting, under, I think, under old business, new business?
Yes.
I had brought up a request that was made while I was campaigning for signatures from a couple of young children in town, and I actually, bear with me one second. I just gotta remember their first names, because I'm terrible with names. Haley and Abigail Billado had actually made a request, because their favorite dessert is ice cream, to see if Douglas could potentially have a Douglas Ice Cream Day, to which I have put a proposal together based off of how the majority of the board feels, which I don't see any objection coming from said proclamation.
Who could possibly object to ice cream, Mr. Chairman?
We haven't read the proclamation yet.
But we know it refers to ice cream.
We know it refers to ice cream, but I will go down through it.
If it endorses pineapple ice cream, I'm out.
It actually does. It's actually item two on the proclamation. Specifically to upset Tim Bonin, we like pineapple ice cream. So, the Douglas Ice Cream Day proclamation, whereas ice cream is enjoyed by over ninety percent of the people of the United States, and whereas ice cream is recognized as the perfect dessert, and is whereas, the end of World War II was celebrated by eating ice cream, and whereas residents of New England consume more ice cream per capita than anywhere else in the United States, and whereas the ice cream industry is over a sixty billion-dollar industry and forecasted to be seventy-five billion by 2024, and provides hundreds of thousands of jobs to the American workforce, and whereas ice cream is rated the number-one favorite treat for kids twelve and under, and now therefore be it resolved, the Douglas Board of Selectmen, by virtue of authority vested in us by the town of Douglas, to hereby proclaim that May 11th as Ice Cream Day in the town of Douglas, Massachusetts, and urge all of its citizens to enjoy an ice cream with their friends and family and fellow residents of Douglas. That's the proclamation.
Perfect.
So, do we vote on this, Mr. Chairman?
We would have to vote on this to actually make it official.
I would move that we adopt the proclamation as read into the record by the chairman.
I'll second it.
It was made by Dave and seconded by Mike. Is there any further discussion?
Can we just add pineapple ice cream into the proclamation?
If you'd like.
No edits.
No edits, I'm sorry.
I'd oppose any edits.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, and then the last part says, in witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand this twenty-sixth day of March in the year 2019, Douglas Board of Selectmen. And there's multiple copies to sign, and we can, if anybody has, I'd like to keep a single colored ink on it.
I got a nice black pen.
If that's what you would like to do.
Pass the pen around with it.
Yeah, pass the pen around with it. All right. I know the other order that we have is to discuss and vote on the proposed FY '20 budget. Our town administrator is currently briefing Finance Committee on the exact same budget, so I would say that we would pause until Matt is available. He doesn't anticipate more than ten or fifteen minutes.
Understood.
So, would we want to do a break in broadcasting and wait for him to return to fire it back up?
Whatever the chairman desires.
What are your thoughts, gentlemen?
Well, as road commissioners, I would like to bring up the idea of a couple of crosswalks in town.
Yeah, well, we can do old and new business.
Yeah, all right. So, I know-
So, this is new business?
What's that?
This should be new business.
Well, I've talked about new business, old business, whatever business.
Medium business.
I don't know necessarily what the solution is, but I do know Main Street is a concern not only to us, but to the people we talk to that are on Main Street. So, I don't want to act unilaterally. I want to connect and make certain the boards on board and maybe check with our Public Safety Committee, but I had asked John Furno to kind of get a feel for what crosswalk opportunities or signs would be available, and he did identify a nice sign, solar-powered, that would be used or blink, would blink if an individual walks past it, as opposed to, you know, having to push the button and wait. You know, this is kind of plug-and-play stuff. I did drive by Main Street today, and it is a little tricky as to where they would go. I know we've got sidewalk snowblowers that would have to, you know, we'd have to take all that into account. So, if this board's on board with, you know, at least exploring it in a more official capacity, as opposed to me just, you know, talking about it, I'd like to move forward with studying that in a realistic way, with an idea that, you know, no monies would be used from the budget, but that we'd look to, you know, the private companies that may have a vested interest in, you know, making certain our pedestrians can get to and fro to help out with that.
I like it. I think, again, I think you talked to me about it earlier, and I still say we call it Bonin's Blankers.
Well, let's see if it's feasible first.
So, John, how long do you think it would take to take a look under, see what would be ideal placement and possibility of placement without obstruction of the blockway plows?
We could go over them the next month, I think.
Okay. Now, how do you guys feel about Bonin's Blankers? You guys like that? See?
He gave the name.
So, and Nick, on a public safety standpoint, obviously something that's illuminated and flashing is going to be significantly more.
Yeah, we've looked at it, John and I looked at it. There's several different signs out there, different companies, and they're all around the same price. It's just a matter of location, where you want to put them, and, you know, figuring out which company you're going to go with.
And the funding piece, you know, I think that's a key component to it.
You would think they should have some effect. It's just like to put the speed trail down there. You can't have it down there all the time. But when we do put it down there, I mean, it slows cars down, and the cars are going to be coming in from each end if we have that sign here consistently, or if someone's crossing. It should bring their attention to it, so it should get some effect out of it.
I'm for it.
Certainly for it. Four crosswalks in a tenth of a mile span.
Right.
Right, and that's congested, and certainly now, you know, with the season being what it is, they're dull, and I know our team will paint them, and they'll look great, but every little bit, every little bit to make sure that we get that platinum, platinum status again.
So, do we want to put a vote forward, ask John, in an official capacity, to do some exploration and report back into it next month?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Made by Mike and seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to take a vote on calling of Bonin's Blankers?
No, let's not do that.
No?
They may not.
No. Adam, you like that.
That's great. I'm abstaining from everything right now.
We have the gentleman from Economic Development here, yes?
Yeah, I think he's waiting to talk to Matt regarding the budget, yes?
Okay.
Want to pause for a minute?
Yeah. We're going to take a ten- or fifteen-minute break, just wait for the administrator. We're back. We've already done Ice Cream Day. I know you're excited about that too, Matt. And we've gone over old and new business, so let's-
Did everybody say what their favorite flavor is?
No, actually.
Well, that's not, I mean, how can it be Ice Cream Day? You don't know what your favorite flavor is.
What we did discover is that Mr. Bonin would have objected to the proclamation, completely objected, had there been pineapple in there.
Yeah.
For the sake of filibustering, I have nothing against pineapple industry. If you weren't here, we need to talk.
My apologies. I distributed a budget package to the Finance Committee.
You're not going to tell us your favorite flavor, or?
Black raspberry.
Thank you.
You never disclosed yours?
No, I was never asked.
What is yours?
Butter crunch.
Nice. Not pineapple for Bonin.
I'll go purple cow.
Purple cow?
I'm barring, I like vanilla.
I'm going to just reiterate my point of abstaining. I do not care for ice cream anymore. As a kid, I liked fudge oil, but having been overloaded it throughout the course of my childhood, all sad.
That'll count.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Wojcicki, we're on to budget stuff.
Yeah, and I'm all wound up like a top, because we've been spending probably the last four days trying to get the last numbers in from insurance people and from department heads, and the run-up to the conclusion.
I'll share with you. You can send that down.
So, I'm going to give it to you in pieces?
Sure.
It will also be available to you electronically, so you can have at it if you want to run some scenarios, but I thought that we would go through the pieces. The first is a projected revenue budget. We start with the top line to figure out what is available for appropriation from Town's General Revenue Fund. The fiscal '20 column includes an incorporation of all the new growth and the override quantity into the base. We estimated new growth this year of one hundred and twenty-five thousand on the advice of the Principal Assessor, who projects us to be somewhat farther along. We typically budget eighty, budget eighty. She thought that was just simply way too low, based on what we already have in the door. Then the intellectual process is go through your debt exclusions and take those funds out. They are not available for appropriation, and we include back our estimated local receipts, which we forecast to grow at two percent a year, which again is a conservative. On the revenue side, we're very conservative. We have broken out the building permits associated with the 40B project. Do you need another copy?
No, no, you can go through it. I'm just sharing, you know, I'm sharing off of device chairs. It's all good.
I made copies for everybody, so.
I didn't want you to not have yours.
I always have one.
All right, then.
The 40B generates building permit activity above and beyond the normal horse of business, and we are going to spend on the expense side for additional help, making sure all those inspections and other analysis is done on time and in a thorough manner. This is a net positive, though. We look at forty in extra revenue, about twenty-five in extra expense, for a net of about fifteen thousand to the bottom line. Then we have our cherry sheet based on House One. We net out the assessments that appear on the cherry sheet to arrive. At the middle of the page, revenues available for appropriation for fiscal '20. Twenty-nine million, two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. Available from other funds, we have the restricted receipts account for the ambulance, the rent from the post office building, the old town hall, and this year we're going to ask for twenty thousand out of the wetlands protection account, because our Concom budget significantly outstrips the revenue that it brings in, and we have to start to reconcile the fact that forty, fifty thousand out and six or seven thousand in every year is unsustainable. We have to figure out what we're doing there, but for one more year, we'll keep it in the budget. Are there any questions about, immediate questions about revenue?
Nope.
Well, for the sake of, I think, a good question, revenues available for appropriation. We're looking at the twenty-nine, two-two-four, five-seven-eight number. I know there's probably some factors there, but I was expecting the 2019 number to be closer to one mil, yeah, it's only a three-hundred thousand or so.
The impact of the override is in this fiscal year, Selectmen. Going from twenty-seven and a half to twenty-nine point two. So, you see it?
Where on your page? Just-
So, the headers don't come across.
Yeah.
The override was passed for fiscal '19.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. Okay, no, you're right. Yeah, yeah, there it is. Got it. Thank you.
The next document that you have in front of you is the administration's municipal functions operating budget request, with five years of history, current years budget, the fiscal '20 budget request, and a five-year projection thereafter. Well, it's four years for a total of five years, five-year budget plan. So, four years out to fiscal '24. Every single department header has the dates there, so you should be able to track it as you go through. It's twenty-five pages of budget requests. The budget this year reflects the opportunity to pivot our expense profile. On the operating side of the municipal budget, the override created enough flexibility for us to invest in initiatives that would reduce the cost of government going forward, and would allow us to correct some issues that we have in the way we operate, in order to lend greater stability going into the future. So, this is the year that you see the change between, you know, capital investments and some of the other things we've done to try to reduce costs, and not spend a whole lot of extra money. In the budget message that I'm not able to distribute tonight, because I want to refine it, we have an exhaustive list, it's about three pages in Word on a standard-sized page, of all the initiatives we took this year to reduce costs. In some cases, we've reinvested them in projects that would have been put off to the future and/or that we might not have done. Example, in the IT area, we completely reconfigured our network. We're going to save anywhere from nine to twelve thousand dollars a year by changing our relationship with Charter, but we also are running Microsoft Seven on all our desktop workstations. Microsoft is not going to provide anything other than critical updates for that operating system after this August. So, we need to start to migrate our people. It's too expensive to do all at once. We'll spread it out over three fiscal years, so we're going to use nineteen money, some leftover eighteen money, and some twenty budget. We might have a couple of stragglers in twenty-one, but there's a pace there of, it's a little bit labor-intensive, of work that will fit our budget and still get the project done before we have serious problems with the operating system. That wouldn't have been possible if we had just left things the way they were and kept paying Charter to run our network. There wasn't any there there for us to get funds available to make the technology change. And so, in that same, so we use grant money to completely rewire the building with modern Internet data cables from the building, from every workstation in the building to our connection point with the street. That was grant money. Then we used savings, and then the existing budget was there to buy all the hardware necessary to rebuild our own network in-house with our own firewall and servers that we own, and we have one project left to take three servers and put them into one. It's all very cost-effective and efficient, the way we should be doing things. We tried to do that across almost every department where we saw an opportunity. We have some lingering personnel issues from decisions that were made in the past that, based on current law and a review of people's responsibilities and authority, that we recommend or request that the board send down to town meeting for approval, which would be some salary changes and adjustments. We'd like to take Adam Furno, who works part-time for the highways department and part-time as the building facilities manager, under a different salary classification altogether, and bring him over to the highway department as a PM five step ten, which is the highest step in that department, a comparable salary plus a small stipend for his new responsibilities as our OSHA safety coordinator. That is reflected in this budget. So, you'll see salary line disappear from building facilities. You'll see an increase in the salaries at highway and an increase in overtime budget for highways, that needs to be picked up. Highway, last year, we budgeted for a mechanic at a PM five step two. That individual, fantastic employee, has decided to become a full-time firefighter for the town of Douglas. That position is vacant. The highway superintendent is asking for a new hire, but at a PM two step one. So, there is a netting offset there in the highway budget for the entry-level employee. After reviewing the impact of the Pay Equity Act and the guidance that has been issued by the Attorney General in March 2018, we looked at all of our department heads and came to the conclusion that we feel like we have a couple of department heads that do comparable work, but whose wages are different, and under the Pay Equity Act unjustifiable. So, the recommendation that I'm making to use that, without further ado, we move the director of the senior center to the same pay grade as the library director. Analysis is responsible for a building, responsible for the safety of the people getting in and out of that building, open to the public, managing significant number of employees, managing a town budget that, when you add the grants, they're leveraging very similar sums of money, and they're managing people. They're responsible to do evaluations and discipline and all the rest of it. When you look at the definition of comparable work under the Pay Equity Act, that meets it. The last item is when, the town made two steps, really. Over the course of four or five years, I got the history over lunch. Forgive me if I don't relate it exactly right, but at one point you had a highway employee who came over to run the fire department. There may have been a little bit of a rivalry there between those people that were running those different departments, and you stepped in, your fire chief, at an M4, Management Four, when most of your other department heads are Management Five. The passage of time now, not only did you get a new chief with a rollover in personnel, but you also went from a small, very small fire department to a twenty-four-seven coverage for the town with both fire and ambulance, with a chief who is a certified paramedic, which is not the most common thing, and not easy to get anymore or maintain. So, we now have a gap between most of our department heads, who are at M5 step ten, which is roughly a hundred thousand dollars, and our fire chief, who's just a little bit under ninety. My proposal is to take the fire chief up to the same level as everybody else who is managing a department. Again, it's, while it's not a strict application of the Pay Equity Act, it sort of is, because there are people of different genders and everything else working here. But how much is under management in terms of assets? Well, the fire department is, every time you see an engine, it's a half a million bucks. The Quint is three-quarters of a million bucks. Ambulances are a quarter million bucks each. You've got seven full-time people who are managing controlled substances in a lockbox that has to be signed off on every single day. I could go on and on and on, but it's a significant responsibility running a full-time fire and ambulance department. So, it is my view that it is not justified to continue to pay that department head less than others with similar responsibilities. The rest of the budget reflects our ongoing priorities. There's now a whole heck of a lot of change, and how you know that is you look at this handout, which is the exact same budget, only it's different. If you look at the top page of the department budget, you'll see Selectmen, Function 100 Compensation, and a salary line that's got a number five-one-one-zero-zero. That is the Management Contract Classification of Employee, fifty-one-one-hundred. All of our department heads are fifty-one-one-hundred. This Activity Code Budget sums all of the money associated with the same activity code. It's the same budget, you just turned it on its side and added the column by its Activity Code header. You'll notice that on your last page of the big budget, page twenty-five, for fiscal '20, there's a bottom-line figure, twelve-eight-nine-six-seven-four-one.
Point five-three percent.
But twelve-eight-nine-six-seven-four-one. On page two of the Activity Code Budget, at the bottom of the column for fiscal '20, there's a number, twelve-eight-nine-six-seven-four-one. To the budget, these two versions of the budget foot to the dollar. What's different is you can take this and look at this column right here on the far-right-hand side of the document. Those ranks tie back to the size of the change in that activity area. So, for 2020, the number one, the account that's grown the most, is fifty-one-one-ten, full-time wages. Number two is retirement pension contributions on page two. But if you're looking at it as a percentage, it's no kidding full-time wages grew by the most dollars, because that's already your biggest account, but as a percentage, it ranks twenty-three. There were twenty-two accounts that grew at a higher rate than your full-time wages for staff. Overall, when you look at all the compensation lines for the town, in fiscal '20, the request is four-point-four percent higher than the prior year, but every year after that, I would call your attention to the fact that our projected growth is below the two-point-five cap of Prop Two and a Half. That is the goal. Let's get everybody on a path, and then lock it down, and manage the cola and steps accordingly. Okay? That's been, that's the objective, so that we can plan and make the moves we need to make on revenues and expenses without having noise about the compensation lines. So, that's that. That can be very helpful if you want to figure out, target the top ten, and see if you feel like you're comfortable with what's going on, those top ten accounts, and we can explain, you know, what's going on with them. You'll notice the entire budget, bottom line, and this does include all of our debt service, but the entire budget, municipal side of the budget goes up by zero-point-five-three.
That's a beautiful thing.
Two more, bear with me. This is the long-promised and probably one of the most excruciatingly absurd documents to produce for anyone, but it's a necessary part of any budget. It's a personnel supplement. It explains how we categorize our employees into the activity codes in the budget. We have people that have a contract. We have those employees who work under the terms of a collective bargaining agreement. We have non-union full-time, part-time stipends, and lots of very detailed explanation, but what's important are these pages which follow. It takes every single employee that is in the budget. It shows their base from fiscal '19, and then the changes that occur to their salary. The three things that change people's salary from fiscal '19 to fiscal '20 are, the leap year adds extra days. So, we have fifty-two weeks this year. We have fifty-two-point-four weeks next year. All of our staff went through their actual shift rotations to determine the exact number of hours that employees in various positions would work in the leap year versus the regular year. The budget reflects that level of detail. The next thing is steps. Not every employee gets a step, because many of our employees, I would say almost the majority, are at the top step, so they're not eligible for any further steps. It is not a driver of the budget until you get to those places where we have younger employees who just started with us, who are entitled to a large step when they are very fresh into their career with us. So, if you're a probationary firefighter or a probationary police officer, you don't make a lot of money. The next year, you get a bump, a substantial bump, because you made it. You made it out of probation. You are actually now, you know, a full-time officer. That's a common practice. So, when you look, and then the- So, when you look, and then the last item is the COLA. The COLA is a town-wide policy. It is set by the Board of Selectmen. It is part of your warrant and the recommendations there. What we asked for last year, I would ask for again this year, is that we treat every employee of the town exactly the same regardless of whether they work for the school department, the fire department, police department. Our collective bargaining agreements were negotiated to 1.75%. I can show you the responses I've gotten or that have been accrued from the town manager listserv. 1.75% is the lowest in the Commonwealth of the parties that have responded to the survey. So, out of over 100 municipalities, the vast majority of them were at 2 or 2.5, were at 1.75. Okay? The last piece, you'll recognize this, this is the front page of the model, the budget scenario that we used last year to do all the what-if conversation. It's still a valuable tool. We may not be doing those what-ifs this year, but this is where we add in the schools.
Known as my favorite spreadsheet.
We add in the schools, Douglas Public Schools, BBT, Norfolk Aggie, and we disclose all of the assumptions that we're making for the five-year budget. So, there's that number again. In the middle of the page, municipal operating bottom line, 12-8-9-6-7-4-1, for an increase of 0.53%. And then, how does that end up? Between there and the bottom line, you've got some big hurdles to jump. The school department budget, which has been set, recommended at 2% increase, a 6% increase for Blackstone Valley Tech, a borderline insane increase in the cost of school bus transportation of 15% for a total school expense or educational expense that is up 3.5%. A general fund bottom line that is up 2.2%. And we have, the budget is balanced. We show a small surplus of $3,233 as a result of some cuts that we made to accommodate changes in health insurance. We have budgeted for five health insurance plans that are not currently matched to an owner. That's the only responsible thing to do, five family plans. Even though we don't expect any, a lot of changes on the municipal side, we're not sure what the schools will do. This year, we had an increase in the census. We had a lot of younger employees who were aging off their parents' plans. So, they're 26-years-old, they came over and joined us at 27. We actually like those people. They're young and healthy, they don't have a lot of claims usually, right? So, we need more of those. But just bear in mind, if the premium's 16.5, 16.7, and the town share of the health savings account is another $2,000, it's $18,000 bucks, times 5, that's $90,000. We have $90,000 cushion in the health insurance budget. The other thing I would draw your attention to is we have had nothing short of an absolutely horrible year when it comes to property casualty. Our claims are 160% of our premium. We're going to take a bad hit this year, so they told us to budget 10% increase in property casualty insurance, and we will budget the same increase next year. As a result of some really big claims over at the school, and we've had a couple of cruisers that we've had in accidents, that doesn't help either.
Does it affect our claim history there, especially for the vehicle accidents, if we can recover or subbrigade?
It probably does because it's not a loss anymore.
Right.
We knock it down a little bit, we go to all these classes, you know, we get the little check from them for 13, 14,000 bucks. We'll do that because that's the only way we're going to knock this bill down.
Right.
But it's going up by a lot. So, that is, there's a lot of material here. I would encourage questions. I'm just dumping it on you now, but in terms of how do we feel, we feel like we came up with a really good budget. It's conservative in many respects.
And balanced.
And balanced. And we still had, right now, our projection is if we spend $500,000 in free cash to support the capital budget and hold back about, somewhere around $175,000 in free cash to roll over from one year to the next.
So, on the school budget line, I know that there's the consultant that's working on reorganizing the school bus contract. So, I don't know if there's been any feedback on that or if that's forecasted in here with an assumption.
It's not. So, this is a worst-case scenario. This is with no change. If they continue running the routes they do today with nobody on the buses, but we're paying for them, I'm not editorializing it all, but that would, that's the 15% increase. I think the maximum we could knock that down is $110,000, $120,000, but it's a worthy project.
What's the theory there, just finding a provider?
Well, there's a lot that goes into this, right? It depends on how much risk you want to take. We, the consultant identified three routes that we could eliminate. The last time I was plugged into the dialogue before I got deep into this, we thought it was prudent to try to find a way to reduce the routes by two. If you push it to three and you have to retreat, that would be terrible. So, push it to two, see if the opportunity is still there in the future, and minimize disruption to pick up time and all the rest. It's like anything else, you know, when we try to change anything in the way that the schools do things, we get a certain amount of resistance or hemming and hawing. Here's my view of it, and my recommendation is let them keep every dollar they save. It is the ultimate test of your priorities. If you come to the process and say, "2% is not enough," and you have the opportunity to save 120 grand, well, then, show us how important those priorities are. Consolidate the bus routes and use the money you've saved for your priorities. God bless you. And then, you can, that's a huge thing for them. They can put that into the bottom line, come back to us next year and say, "That's where we start."
Right.
Roll the dice. I'm fine with that because that's what we have to do. We have to knock this contract down. Nothing we do can grow at 15% a year and not wreck us. For all the good work we're trying to do, we're going to throw it all out the door to a $1.6 million bus contract. I just, I know there's needs, but for love of God, there's got to be a better way.
I mean, I'm okay with, I'd like to...
There's a lot here, so I just thought we'd get it all out and...
There is a lot here. And you did use my favorite spreadsheet.
I didn't use your least favorite spreadsheet, although since it automatically updates, I could print it for you.
No, thank you. I like, I like this one.
We're trying to automate the thing so that there's no stress running into the FinCom flyer and all the rest of it. It's all done already. You just take it and put it in.
And although you, I know you've met with all the department heads and gone over what their forecasting is and everybody feels comfortable department-head-wise as to where they said.
We got to most of the departments, except for the really small, like the boards and committees. They were invited, mostly, we're talking about accounts at $100, $500.
We have a gentleman from EDC that was here, the one to talk about the budget as well.
Yeah, and as I think I've signaled to everybody, that's something we should, we've got a little cushion here. There's a couple of things we could do to invigorate that budget, so that's not a, that's not a undoable request, but we want to hear what they want to do with it. You're going to, by the time, administrate a lot of donuts, right, Bob? You're in every day to talk to us.
Or ice cream.
Or ice cream, there you go.
I like peanut butter cups.
Donut-flavored ice cream?
How about peanut butter cups? No? I'll take the coffee. So...
Did you want to talk about the EDC budget now, or do you want Brad to do it, or?
I would just like to bring it up for discussion. It's been $1,000 for the last 20 years. I think there's going to be a lot of activity in the future. Can we get it up to $5,000?
I think so. If the board wants us to do that, we'll make it work.
Well, I think it's, I think it's putting our money where our mouth is, too.
Absolutely.
Because we've been pretty strong saying we want a very active economic development committee, and these guys have been killing it lately. And I think that the enhanced funding for them might give them additional opportunity to do things. So, I'm for increasing them to $5,000.
So, they have $1,000 in their budget now. We closed out with 32, 33 at the bottom line. That leaves us $700. I'll just take it all out of Gene's budget.
That's okay.
That works.
I'm fine with that. I'd like to know a plan, though, right? As to where those monies would be used or why, why we need it. Obviously, $1,000 hasn't been doing it.
Well, $1,000 hasn't been used. I think because, I think I'm on record on camera saying it more than once, and I think I said it on the floor at town meeting one night when I was asked, I believe by Mrs. Bozinski, no more studies. No more studies. A caterpillar turns into a butterfly. How many times you study it? That's what it is. What you need is, and Mr. Manerik is our best example of this, boots on the ground. Call people, build relationships, identify opportunities, be aggressive. No is not a bad answer. If somebody doesn't want to build or locate here, that's fine, move on to the next target. That's what EDC needs to do. It's work. It's all it is. And when I did the job in Wensocket, that's all I did. I was in a building every day or on the phone every day with somebody. Try, and how many harebrained schemes do you get in an old industrial city? Lots, right? But there were always those that made sense, and we saved a lot of buildings, and we did a lot of good work, but that's what it takes.
Yep.
And how does that translate into budget? Well, again, you're not going to buy studies, but you are going to try to make sure that if you're going to do a really complex grant, we'll need help. We'll need help, actually physically, getting the application filled out, understanding the compelling, what the language is for the grant or, because there's always buzzwords, right? That's how you write grants. And if it's a really massive undertaking like MassWorks, we'll have to figure out the feasibility of the thing. $5,000 isn't going to pay for all that. It gets you to a point where you're doing your share, and then the developer has to pick up a line share.
No, I think that's, it's a good, a good step. OPEB, you may have said it, what's our contribution to OPEB?
So, the bottom, it's on the bottom of the last page, it's $50,000, which is what has been budgeted in the past. When we close out, if we close out the year with a surplus in the employee benefits budget function, we try to take that surplus and apply it to OPEB above and beyond the $50,000.
Makes sense. I mean, I don't think it's, I'm worried of, do we need to vote on this tonight?
No, 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 actually.
Because I'd like to really dig into this a little bit.
It was submitted tonight so that you could, I could give you a briefing, and then if there are any immediate questions, we could, but, yeah, no, it's way too premature to do anything else with it.
Okay. And then, we can plug in the increase. So, I think I already rolled it in on the, on the spreadsheet itself, so we can plug that in and look at what final numbers look like. But I'm not going to say that we're taking it from Gene. I won't let you say that.
Well, every number has a story. My story is I'm cutting it to get it to Eve.
What you can tell Gene is that Tim may be able to find it.
Let's be absolutely honest. Her expense account is $2,185. If I take $700 bucks away from her, I just cut it by 33%. I don't know if I want to do that. Maybe it's risky. Find another way.
Okay.
When we're talking hundreds, we can find a way.
That's all I have. Anybody have any questions on that?
None for me, thank you.
I like the format. I know it's probably a little cumbersome to print this, but it's user-friendly.
We'll keep working on it every year until we're satisfied. We're getting there.
No, I like, I like this one, actually. It's got the ranking on it, too.
Yeah, I like that as well.
That's all I got.
That's all I know.
Anybody in the audience got anything? Nothing. And we've already gone over old business and new business. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Made by Dave, seconded by Mike. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.